And if I just wanted to start off by showing that slide with the budget by department first. So what we're talking about today is general fund. This is a in response to a work session that we had regarding body cameras and regarding ongoing costs. While the council is interested in putting a measure on the ballot to see if the community is willing to support body cameras financially. It was also a request that we have this conversation with elected departments and departments regarding any efficiencies that have been realized or could be realized in the general fund, as well as what would those impacts be if there was a reduction in order to support the ongoing financial? So I just want to briefly show this. This was shared at the previous work session where the highlighted ones is showing law and justice. And the reason why I'm calling that out is I just want to share that almost 73% of the general fund is law and justice. This includes the sheriff's office, the courts, the prosecuting attorney, juvenile, indigent defense, superior court, the clerk's office and the PA's office all have the law and justice piece of this. The transfers and pass throughs are like election funds, planning code, county road funds, the VA funds. So strictly just a capacity to pass through the money to the other departments that are supported. And I can also share that in the general fund, its total is about 100, just over 186 million. The law and justice component is about 136 million. But this is the least no restricted funds. We certainly have a larger budget with other funds that are that have restrictions. So they are not able to help support funds like or programs like the body camera program. And then, as you can see, and I would also say on the general fund too, the majority of where the money is spent is with people. So that is salaries and benefits. And that's between 60 and 70% of the total fund because those, you know, they're providing those services. So if there's no questions on that, I or is it, let me just pause. Is there any questions or feedback from the council on the general fund specifically?
Kathleen, excuse me. When I look at the, I mean, I'm seeing these highlighted things and part of the general fund included in this would would be the, I'm assuming the whole records issue.
Yeah, so this is our, this is our
This is just current budget? Okay, all right.
Yes. Okay, yeah, so this is just current budget on here.
Okay.
And there is a couple items on or there's one specific item on here that you want to call it as well. And that's the railroad that's listed here. That is a capital project and then did not have a separate funding source, specific funding source. So that actually is restricted and cannot be used for general fund purposes. And like I said, this has been shared with the council and actually SLT electeds and others in the county. Any other questions on this? Okay. So we will go in. So again, I want to make a couple just overall statements before I ask the electeds to participate. And then I can give a high level overview of the departments that are under me. And they, a lot of them are also here to provide any input or answer questions as well. But I will say, you know, as you know, we have a structural deficit in the general fund where expenses are continuing to exceed our revenues. Since I've been here in the last five, six years, every year, we're continually having to try to find efficiencies in order to help balance and maintain a balanced budget moving forward. So it is an expectation for my departments that we are working as efficiently as possible. That as management, we should be continually looking at efficiencies and making sure that we're maximizing our service level the most efficient way, because as you know, our community pays for our salaries for a service. Part of the budget process moving forward into 2022, an expectation of my departments for all funds is that anything that is submitted actually needs to have a revenue source tied to that or it needs to be budget neutral in another way, or it needs to be mandated by law. And that's to help reduce the ongoing financial liability of the county. Based on our last conversation again with the council with regards to the funding of the body cameras. I know the council is supportive of putting on a ballot measure in November. But there was also a desire to talk to electeds, the other elected officials, as well as myself regarding efficiencies that have been realized already, ones that could be realized or in the works if they have any. And then what would that impact be to the service level in their departments? If the council reduced general fund that goes to the departments to help support the cost of body cameras? So with that said, I'll go ahead and start calling on the electeds to have that conversation and share the input directly from their departments now. And we'll start with the treasurer, Alicia Topper.
Good morning, council. It's nice to see you having this discussion. I'm going to keep my comments brief. I have a fairly small budget in comparison to the overall general fund. And as you know, the majority, if not every single duty in my office is statutorily mandated. And so services aren't being offered that are over and beyond what's required by law. And if you look back 10 years ago in the treasurer's office, we had 25 FTEs that were funded out of the general fund. In 2021, that was 21.75. So even with population growth of over 60,000 people in our county, we were doing more work with less people. So I think as you look at reducing budgets around the general fund or looking for new revenue to help fund special projects or services that the community are asking you to provide, I think that you should look outside of further reductions because for my office, I don't have the choice whether to bill and collect property taxes or to collect real estate excise tax or to do banking services on behalf of all the school districts and taxing districts in the county. So I'm happy to answer questions after the other counselors and our elected officials provide their feedback.
And next assessor, Peter Van Norwick.
All right, thank you, council for giving us this opportunity to talk. You know, my comments really kind of echo Alicia's. We, the services we do are mandated. And in the past five years, we've had a 6% increase in just the real property parcels. So our work continues to be going up. Our seniors that are on the senior exemption program, we've had a 19% increase in the seniors that are in the senior exemption program. So that work continues to increase. Our new construction permits in the last five years have gone up 34%. I was out a couple of weeks ago at the ribbon cutting at the Ridgefield Library, talked to the mayor of Ridgefield, and he says the level of permits that they're doing, they can do for the next seven years. We have CAMIS out there also with that North Shore project, bringing a lot of new construction onboard. Even at the county, new construction, 179th, that area continues to grow. Those increases in parcels and seniors and all the new construction we add, maybe for the building department, okay, you go out and you do a building permit. We have to service that property, those new parcels for the life of the of that property. We have to assess them, you know, the every six years. We are looking at new technology. We've made law change, gotten law changes approved for the state of Washington to work for being more efficient. But technology and efficiency can only get us so far when our number of parcels and our new construction and seniors continues to grow. So I just want the council to know, we are always looking for efficiencies. If we hadn't found efficiencies, we wouldn't be able to be keeping up now. So that is something that we are constantly doing. And like Alicia, I'll take comments after the rest of the elected officials have spoken. Thank you.
Auditor Greg Kimsey. Greg, it looks like you're still muted.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good morning, everyone. As the other electeds have previously stated, we are, we are continuously evaluating our work environment and adjusting staffing accordingly. So in 2018, we, we offered voluntarily to eliminate two positions in licensing and financial services. Last year, we restructured our licensing department in, in response to additional work requirements from the Department of Licensing, which also had provided additional revenues for us. In the elections office, we now have seven full time people instead of nine people. And, and on top of that, we've taken on additional work. We're now doing the jail billings for the sheriff's office in cooperation with the sheriff's office. We're reconciling some benefit accounts for that HR department previously did. As you might know, we have had historically high recording volumes this past year. And we've done that without additional people. If you, if anyone has ideas about where we can reduce expenses, I encourage you to bring those forward. I'm happy to explore those. I thought it might be helpful also to bring a little bit of context as Kathleen provided the general fund breakdown. You know, really the story here at Clark County is that we have continually reduced in most areas of the general fund, we have continually with staffing. And as Kathleen said, about 60% of general fund expenses are people. So if you just focus on staffing levels, I think that gives you a pretty good understanding of what's going on in the county. What we've done, really, the story is fewer people, more highly skilled people. And we're able to do that, not just because we're smarter and better, but because of increased investments in technology. So I think a really helpful part of the analysis would be to look at what, what are increased investments in technology? What are we spending on our annual maintenance agreements? And I'm not suggesting we can live without technology because I can't imagine getting through this past year without our citizens being able to do every single transaction that they need to do with the county online. So I'm certainly not suggesting we can invest less money in technology, but that is the story here at the county. Over the last 10 years, most departments in general fund have had a reduction in staffing. Over the last five years, most departments in general fund have had a reduction in staffing. So if you focus, that's, again, I'm happy to answer any questions at your convenience. Thank you.
And next would be the clerk, Scott Weber.
Good morning. I appreciate you guys working on this. I know this is definitely a big thing that Clark County has talked about for years. So this might be the opportunity to, to put it together. For the clerk's office, I want to say this has probably been the most challenging year as we're all in the same boat. You know, now trying to find people to work in the office without other jobs competing, you know, to pull them away. You know, so we're actually doing a lot more with less people. And it's not sustainable what we're doing. But, you know, we're trying to hold it all together. One of the biggest things that we have coming up is the Blake refunds. There's an opportunity that between the PA's office and us and the judicial, there's a reimbursement amount that we can negotiate to get, and that would be general fund money. You know, I think as we, we increase, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we're, we're seeing a lot more domestic violence coming through the office. But I, I anticipate that that's going to change, you know, when, once civil cases come back and we're not going to be flooded as much as we are now. So, you know, we're just trying to hold steady with what we've got.
Thank you. And prosecuting attorney, Tony Golick.
Morning. First, I just want to thank the council for your work on implementing a body cam system in Clark County. It's, it's definitely high time to make sure that we accomplish this task that I would say is absolutely critical to the criminal justice system. Body cams are something that I think are going to do a lot of positive things for, for law enforcement or law enforcement's interactions with the public, for the justice system's ability to make sure that we are achieving just results in cases. It will give us good evidence in cases. I think it will reduce negative interactions with law enforcement and the public. I think there's going to be all sorts of positives with the implementation of body cams. So I thank the sheriff's office and the council for the really good and important work in pushing forward on this and making sure that we get body cams in Clark County. With respect to budget in the prosecutor's office, so, you know, we went through a year where we couldn't do trials in the criminal justice system and the outcome in our justice system is the same in statewide and that and nationally. And that is huge backlogs of cases. Because if you can't resolve cases with trial, it becomes very difficult to resolve cases and cases back up. So we currently have larger caseloads in most all of our criminal divisions than we've ever seen. Clark County, by way of example, in our property crimes division, normal caseloads pre pandemic, 60, 70 would be high numbers of cases. Now people have as many as 100 cases, you know, per individual attorney. Very large caseloads in our children's justice center, very large caseloads in our domestic violence center. And it's going to take a significant period of time to work through these cases. As you're aware, fortunately, there is ARPA funding and the prosecutor's office. We have, we are requesting ARPA funding for the prosecutor's office and for indigent defense at an equal rate to staff up our attorneys and indigent defense attorneys at an equal rate to, to add some attorneys and some staff to push through this backlog. But it's going to take years to, to, to get caught up to pre pandemic levels. So that's where we are in the criminal justice system. People in the prosecutor's office and in the courts, they did a lot of really good work during the pandemic, moving to full electronic systems, you know, so we are ready if we had to do that sort of thing again. Fortunately, we're able to do, you know, more in person and more standard operation now. We're moving back to a normal jury trial process now. And we're starting to finally see more jury trials go, which is a very positive thing. And we're seeing lots of cases move into our change of plea dockets. And those, those are generally full at this point. So, you know, things, things are moving, but these backlogs of cases are, I guess, a very large. Been in this business for 25 years and there's just never been caseloads like this in a system before. So if we weren't, if there wasn't the ability to get the ARPA funding, I'm frankly not sure what we would do. But I am looking forward to that. I think that that will be the answer to, to moving through the backlogs. We intend to implement on that quickly. Available for any questions? Thank you.
Okay, before I go to the sheriff's office, I did want to share from district court, they were unable to attend that. Obviously, they have a lot of requirements in law with regards to their operations and services in our community. And they just wanted to share that some of the areas that would definitely be hindered if there is a reduction in general fund would be support that they're doing for other departments, such as superior court, therapeutic courts and interpreters that we need to provide for our community. So they just wanted me to share that information. And I did see that Judge Vanderwood from Superior Court is on. And I would welcome the opportunity, if you have anything to share, judge, at this time.
Sure, I'll add just a couple of additional thoughts. Certainly on the Superior Court side, where we rank on the budget usage is down the line, but we're mindful of the need to utilize the funds that we have and look for ways that we can be efficient. We're in the process of trying to bring on a new court administrator, which is why you're hearing from me about some of these budget issues as opposed to an actual administrator. So we're getting that in place. We do both on the Superior Court side as well as the juvenile side, look for ways consistently to be mindful of the budget. On the juvenile side, we continue to have unfilled positions as a way to kind of minimize the budgetary impact as well. So we're certainly very lean on the staffing side, both Superior Court and juvenile, and are really understaffed in those areas. We're also dealing consistently with unfunded mandates that we get from the state as well. An example of that was a new statute went into effect at the beginning of the year with the minor guardianship statute. So it's a new statute that's now been implemented. It allows individuals to have guardian ad litem appointed at no cost to them, attorneys appointed at no cost to them, a new position called a court visitor that gets appointed to make sure that everything's done in the best interest of these children who may be at risk in various ways. Unfortunately, it's an unfunded mandate because those positions aren't directly provided with the state legislators with funds to cover those. So that creates a bit of a challenge for us on the budgetary side to work through as well. We're going to continue to have budgetary impacts on the Blake issue as it comes to resentencing and reevaluating those cases. As you've heard from Mr. Weber and Mr. Golick, I think referenced it as well, as well as ongoing issues and stresses with concerns with COVID, not only on the criminal side of issues, but on the civil side as well, as we move forward away from the eviction moratorium and the substantial backlog of unlawful detainer cases. That creates a challenge for us on both the staffing side as well as judicial resource side. So as, as everyone else has indicated, various struggles on the budgetary side, but we continue to look for ways that we can help be as efficient as possible. And certainly I would be available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Vanderwood. I know Sheriff Atkins is out of the office today, and he had mentioned to me that undersheriff Chapman would be providing some information this morning.
Good morning, council. I'm going to let Chief Porch start it off for us. Morning, everyone. I'll just take just a few seconds. I will reiterate everything Tony said, but we still are 100% in favor of this for all the, all reasons. And then, you know, the deputies or law enforcement are, want this as well to show the good work that they're doing. But you can also see some of the legislation has been changing too this year. And you can feel that this could be coming as a mandate anyways. Or so just to keep that in mind as well. So we have done a lot of legwork on meeting with different community groups and with the unions. And we're kind of in this holding pattern. So we've set it up, we're ready to go. But obviously, the budget is the one issue. And I'll hand it over to John to discuss the budget stuff with the sheriff's office.
Yeah, and I just think, I think you're aware that the 25th of July, this weekend, this Sunday, the majority of the police reforms the legislature passed will be taking effect. And I think it will become even more important for us to have the body cameras available. All I want to do is touch on, because we have no budget authority or positional authority at the moment, we really can't refine the numbers any better or go out for an RFP. So I know, I know the council has asked, like, you know, what are the true numbers? We're, we're really just giving it a best guess based on a lot of research right now. So, so if there's any further questions about cost, it's, that's where we're at right now. And thank you for all your work.
Just a question, is there, could you explain what the impacts would be if the council were to reduce general fund to the sheriff's office so that they understand what that would look like?
I think off the cuff, I think the problem is the majority of us, our, our job is, is people. And really, at this point, any, any further cuts would really result in people and a reduction in service. And I know the judge mentioned unfunded mandates. We've had to pivot in some areas and create a new civil process for things that the legislature has changed. And so we're always jockeying bodies around, trying to move them to the next best place. And right now, the civil process with the emergency protection orders that are out there, along with what's coming on the civil side, we're just robbing Peter Pay Paul all the time with our positions. And the county continues to grow. And so we haven't seen a reduction in need for service. And really, everything is, is bodies. So that would, that would impact us greatly.
Okay, so with that said, council, I'll do a, just a brief highlight of some of the departments that are under the county manager. And then I do have some of my colleagues on as well if there are specific questions. So just a reminder, there's about, we have about 1,700 employees in the county. And as the undersheriff just stated, our community is growing, but our staffing level is not increasing to maintain that service. For example, in human resources, they want, they have gone from 20 employees to 13 employees through reduction scenarios. This also included adding a department, which is risk to human resources. They had historically, they were as high with their management of one director and three managers. And about five, six years ago, they went down to two managers. They currently do not have any managers. They have a director and then employees who support 1,700 employees in our organization. The budget office has, they have also reduced FTE over time. They do have a very small budget. They currently only have five FTE that's supporting the budget process for the entire county, which is over $500 billion. If there was a reduction in general fund, they would have to be reducing FTE as well. Their budget was reduced a few years ago when additional budget was needed for the new Questica budget module. This was a significant increase in efficiency in our county and also decreased our liability. Because if you remember, for those of you who have been on the council for a few years, we were doing manual spreadsheets for our budget. So this, for them to reduce their budget to pay for that just shows a way that we can maximize on our efficiencies. If there also is a reduction in general fund for the budget office, it would hinder the ability to move forward with other much needed necessary projects, including capital budgeting. We have never had a capital budgeting process or a module. That is, we need to be able to look at what's needed, budget for what's needed so that we're not having like all of a sudden, we need to find $5 million because we have not budgeted appropriately. So that is something that's moving forward. Also, performance budgeting, fund balance policies. All of these are best practices that can maximize our efficiency and decrease our liability to the county. Community services, the majority of their budget is restricted funds. A lot, they have reduced the very small amount of general fund in their department. Right now, if they had a reduction, they are paying for a 24 project position. They would have to move that to ARPA funding. They still need positions in supporting the COVID pandemic and their response to councils initiatives on supporting, you know, the community with regards to any of the social services that they're doing. If there was further reductions in their department, this would reduce services to veterans, the homeless programs and other indirects that were mandated to do. Information technology, they have a lot of areas that are not mandated, but their resources help us be more efficient. So some of their non-mandated projects would include like customer facing technology, analytics and reporting, project management, innovation, research and development, process improvements. And the majority of that is not the actual programs. It's the people to help support the programs and develop the programs and look at process improvement throughout the county. There are several more examples that we can certainly dispense. I just wanted to hit some of the highlights for the council's information. And so at this time, I would turn it over to the council. If you have questions for any of the electeds on today or any of my other colleagues that have joined us today, we're more than happy to answer questions. And then if there's any additional information that you would like to have research or come back at a later time, we're more than happy to do that as well.
Are there questions at the council?
Just one quick question, if I may, to, to Peter. I was wondering what has occurred with the FTE in your department as the workload increased?
So Karen, we, when I first
So Karen, we, when I first came in, we did give up positions back in, I want to say 2013, 2014, somewhere around there. Uh, when new construction was low. And so in the last couple of years, we've had project positions um helping us with both the additional seniors. And the um on the appraisal side. Um, because we weren't sure how long new construction was going to last. So we somehow managed, we've managed to to get by by um. Increasing in in technology, we did increase, say, the technology for our seniors. But um we are in this next budget, we are going to need to ask for those project positions to be made into permanent positions. Because the new construction has kept coming um. You know, it's been, it's been years now. So we asked for the projects because we didn't want to ask for it long term. Um, clearly, you know, Richfield being the fastest growing city, Camas with that North Shore, the new construction is going to keep going. That is our most labor-intensive work, right? We have to get those every plan into the system. And then we have to have foots up, foot, feet on the ground to measure, to verify everyone that's built out there. So that new constructions actually are most labor-intensive work. Um, the next most labor-intensive work we have is this senior exemption process. Um, and a couple of years ago, we had an increase in the income level. And um, so that did a great increase in number of seniors coming in. This last legislative session, the number of deductions were added. Um, Representative Orkut did a bill that got through the House that is basically allowing Medicare Part B to now be deductible. So that's also going to allow another big group of seniors into the senior exemption program. And so we have continuing new construction plus many more seniors coming onto the senior exemption program. So we have a lot of work that we see, you know, coming down our path.
And so the total number of FTE in increasing terms is what?
Uh, in the past five years, we've increased two, but since in the last, I guess, 12 years, we're still down, I think, one from where we started like about 12 years ago.
Thank you.
The counties, as you can see, the county's been growing significantly since then.
Are there other questions?
Um, Madam Chair. I don't really have questions. I have more along the lines of comments, if I may. So thank you. So to everyone on this call, all the fellow elected officials, thank you for the presentations. And to Kathleen, now, we recognize we're not the evil budget tears. We recognize everyone is keeping their belts really tight every budget cycle. I I the comments I want to make is, you know, we're all in this together. And I appreciate that people aren't trying to empire build or puff budgets and and are really looking for efficiencies. And and to that, I would add that we just yesterday discussed a very substantial reinvestment in IT. Uh, to bring us and keep us in the modern world from permitting to uh all that we do, we need to do it and be able to do it efficiently and electronically. So a huge investment that we're trying to make. The uh, you know, the budget pie that we have, uh, one of the, and I'm kind of directing this to everyone. Uh, but the courts in particular, because that's where I have my most recent expertise. And I'm, I still have no clear answer where we sit and I keep getting contrary information. You know, we have an other category of all these besides uh real estate uh tax and. And our sales tax, uh, we have cat hundred different categories of other fines, fees, revenue sources. And that pie substantial piece of our budget pie uh from past budget uh presentations has been reduced. Instead of grown. And so I'm somewhat perplexed by that. We just had a briefing yesterday where we raised a fee. And, you know, my personal predilection is to have as few fees as possible. But where we have them, we need 100% cost recovery. And yesterday we had one hadn't been adjusted in 25 years. You know, that hasn't kept up with inflation and then we voted on a substantial increase. I I don't like doing business like that, but there's probably a lot of fines and fees out there that have never been adjusted or aren't being paid attention to. And that was my reference to the court. Um, I mean, I used to, as a judge, have to have a a pretty long list of mandatory state fines and fees. Uh, that had to be imposed in every single case. And that was mainly on the criminal side. The civil division always did pretty well. But we were constantly getting reminders uh from our county budget tears and the state uh to make sure you impose fines and fees. I'm not, I'm not talking about your equity adjustments. I'm talking about collecting mandatory fines and fees from those who have uh inability to pay, not denying services. Uh, because people don't have an ability to pay. So we just need to be mindful of all those miscellaneous revenue streams uh and pay attention to them. So we don't, we don't wait 25 years to make a cost adjustment uh on on a on a fee. Um, as to sales tax, you've heard me say it and, you know, what? That's our biggest challenge. We're losing a chunk. And whether it's 10% or 35%, you know, we're losing 10 to 35 million dollars a year in sales tax to Oregon. And that's uh, that's the way the state system sets up the taxing right now. And and we are hobbled by that. We're gonna hopefully move forward and and try to get some fairness and equity amongst uh our state legislators uh to make an adjustment on that. Uh, and because that would substantially loosen our ability to look at uh growth in areas where we really need it. So we don't have to continue to tighten our belts. You know, I, from the assessor to the treasurer to the sheriff, you know, we we can't run your departments nor are we able to. Uh, nor do we have your expertise. We just count on you uh to be as efficient as with the tax dollars uh as we can. Uh, so those are just the general comments I wanted to make, uh, Madam Chair. And I, and I want to end on a positive note. I appreciate that we are all in this together. We are doing our best and I think this public discussion um for our taxpayers is is critical. Uh, so they know we're doing the best uh we can to manage their tax dollars in a frugal and efficient way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I wanted to make a comment. I I do want to thank all of you electeds for being here and, you know, presenting to us that the difficulties that you have. That and the statutory requirements, of course, that you have and um and and I appreciate that. Um, the one thing that I would say is. That that is repeated often is is that we have a structural deficit. We know that. There is one way to remedy it. And if we all as electeds in the county would join together and ask our legislative delegation to put forward a bill. Even though we would have to do it probably every um legislative session. Uh, until it's actually, it actually comes to fruition. And that would be because we are a border county, a unique border county in in the state of Washington. Because we border a state right, you know, within five minutes uh of us that has no sales tax. And so the temptation for our citizens to go over there and purchase large, make large purchases where they can take it home. Now, when they, when it's uh, you know, shipped or delivered, of course, that tax, uh, that sales tax is still exists for them. However, if they can go pick something up and it's a large item, you know, there, that that temptation is very, very uh. Hard to resist for a lot of our citizens. And I know s- some of the legislators will will tell us, you know, use all the tools in your toolbox, which means. Please extract all the taxes that you can, raise the tax base, uh, you know, by by asking our citizens to pay more. And I would just say to that, uh, what I would like is to be able to keep more of what is paid by our taxpayers. And those who are, who do not, who resist the temptation to go over the river and, you know, purchase their large items. We shouldn't inflict more upon them because because they're conscientious or because they do their shopping here on this side of the river. I would just plead with you to work with us in our legislative delegation to put this legislation forward. It's tough because we're only one county and there are other border counties, but ours is unique because of the closeness to the state of Oregon, which has no sales tax. So that would be, that would be my plea. I do, I do think uh that these body worn cameras are very important. And I think it's important to show the good that our um officers and law enforcement does. And and also, uh, you know, if there are any bad actors, it it's going to catch that as well. But more than that, it it just is helpful for our community to see what's happening and to know the full picture. So um. I appreciate the presentations and I understand the constraints. So thank you all.
Are there further questions or comments by the council?
Madam Chair, sorry, just one, I just uh want to say thank you as well for everyone to be here today. I know this is not the first time you've had to do this and it probably won't be the last, but I appreciate you taking the time to. Um, outline the challenges that you all have in your departments and the the struggles that we all have in the county trying to make ends meet. Um, given the constraints that we have in county government. So thank you for taking the time to do this and and it does give our community another opportunity to see what you're all doing in your departments to to maintain costs. And to to continue to provide services to our community. So I just do want to say thank you for that.
Other comments?
Actually, I I I will second that. I I think it is very helpful. I think that uh you folks really do watch your budgets and and I appreciate that. I, you know, you've you've made reductions and and that is re-appreciated and you you're you're frugal. So that helps. Thank you.
If there aren't.
I'm sorry, I just, I guess, I'm sorry. Um, as we're having this conversation as it relates to the funding of body cameras, maybe that's where you were headed is kind of what our next step would be in terms of. We realistically believe there's some um nuggets of money in our current general fund budget to pay for these. Or, you know, do we move forward with uh with the public vote on the public safety, uh, one, one tenth to 1% so?
I would think that those, I I think it's pretty evident by what we've seen, both in all of our budget numbers and these presentations by the electeds. That uh there is no money to be found within our budget to be able to do this. So if our citizens are willing, um. That is how we're going to have to do it. Send out, send out a a vote of the people, whether they are uh for this uh public safety increase in taxes, so. So that I believe is our next, uh, Counselor.
Uh, thank you. And since that was just brought up, I had kind of floated the idea of, right, number one, I'm in favor of putting uh the measure in front of the people and letting them decide. As we certainly heard from constituents is uh they did, they do want to reinvest and invest into uh law enforcement. And that, and other areas and and would be willing to pay more. Uh, that should be a voter decision. So I'm I'm looking forward to putting that before the voter. I had floated, uh, because we do have so many needs and that of eventually could become more efficient use of our money. Uh, if we were to in- invest in, say, a public defender's office or something of that nature. Uh, so uh, there are other options from the point 1%. And I know it's going to be a hard political pull for our voters to even digest that and vote for that. But I'm wondering if there's any uh desire to put alternate measures on the ballot as well for a point 2%. Uh, which would increase uh the revenue coming in. And then maybe we could afford uh better public services in other areas of law enforcement. Uh, it, there is a narrow uh but wide-ranging uh list of uh uses for for the money. If we were to put a a point 2% uh like a public defender's uh office. So I I just throw that out there for uh group discussion. Uh, but I certainly don't want to jeopardize even the one um request of the public to ask for a point 1%.
My belief is that if we put those two things together, it will be less likely that the um citizenry will pass that. As much as we know, it's constitutional and very important that uh people get this public defense. Um. I I know what the attitude of the people is, unfortunately. Um, they don't care so much. That sounds terrible. If they were in the situation, they would care, but, you know, they aren't, all of them aren't. So that would be my my stance is that I think we're jeopardizing the possibility of the point 1% passing. If we add that additional, those, that additional thing. If we, maybe if we add two and, uh, you know. That that might be a different thing, but I, you know, that also could create problems. But I'd open it up for other counselors if you would like comment. And frankly, other electeds, if you have anything to to comment on too, I I invite you to make comment on that if you'd like.
Chair.
Counselor. Yeah, um, while I recognize and I'm definitely a proponent for increasing funding to our indigent defense. And I'm interested in exploring uh the possibility of a public defender's office. But I I guess my question for the county manager would be, is it um? Perhaps for our other electeds who work in the the financial side of things, uh. Is it a an appropriate process to put a ballot measure out, asking the voters for money for programming? That we don't necessarily have a plan or a budget item for?
Not talking about the legal aspects as a business process, I would not recommend that. We need to do our due diligence so that we can ensure confidence in the community, that we've done our work to actually show what that would look like and the costs associated with it. So I think it would, um, on a business side, it doesn't, it, um, we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, in my opinion. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Well, I, Chair O'Brien, I might, I might just uh offer up uh my very limited understanding of this tax uh environment. However, I I do understand that the uh, the 1/10 to 1% that is being discussed on the ballot. Could trigger actions by other, by cities. And um, so to have a better understanding of what the impact of of the ultimate impact would be of that. If the, if the voters were to approve that and if cities and towns were to to enact their own or to not enact their own or to place it on the ballot same time. It's, it's a, it's a fairly complex um legal environment that uh I'm not qualified to really address. But I just wanted to uh make sure you are aware of it to some extent.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
So I mean, um, if I could, just, I I think it is important for the council to understand. Uh, one thing, and I think I have shared it with the county manager. And I think I have shared it with the county manager. And that is because of the way our assessment system is set up, our tax rates, um, as assessed values go up, right? The tax rate goes down. Um, so about ten years ago, we were about a dollar forty with most of the fire districts. And I think now because of the increasing in assessed values, we're down to, you know, under ninety-eight cents per thousand. A lot of the fire districts have gone back out and most of their rates, um, and they have been approved by the public are signi-significantly higher. And one of the challenges with sales tax, you know, there's pluses and minuses to it. And that, one is, as inflation goes up, so does the sales tax revenue, you know, goes up because people are paying more. So that helps us in an inflationary process, but property taxes is the most stable. And, you know, one of the things I really would, would like to hear from the council, as we are seeing areas of inflation, what is the plan as our gas prices are going up, our other costs are going up to actually address the challenges that we might face from an inflationary environment, which we haven't had to govern through for a number of decades, actually.
I think I laid out part of a plan, which was, uh, which was to ask the legislature to give us more of what, what our citizens, uh, pay. So, uh, that's a tough, you know, that's a tough question and a tough solution because, because we know the environment and, you know, understanding, um, where we sit, um, ge- geographically is also, uh, tough too. Other counselors can weigh in if they'd like. Crickets? Any other comments or questions to the council? Okay, I, that, I guess then concludes our discussion today. With, you know, with the other, uh, electeds and departments. And, uh, I guess this will be something, well, we can, we can further discuss in, in council time. But I believe our next steps would be to discuss, uh, putting this forward on the ballot for, for the voters to have a voice here. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, yeah, you're, you're correct. So we'll move forward with the ballot measure and get that on the November ballot. And as I mentioned, I know my departments, you know, and I know electeds are continually looking at efficiencies and we will continue that. I mean, that's an ongoing conversation and process that we have here. Um, so I appreciate their time as well and we'll move forward.
Thank you, counselors.
Okay, thank you all.